Well, good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our Committee of the Hold presentation tonight for Monday, October 18th, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order. And first item that we have tonight is a 60-minute budgeted discussion on the Racial Equity Task Force. They have a presentation for us tonight. And to start us off, I'll turn it over to Council Member Frank Dara, who was the Chair of this group, to give us a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really honored tonight to introduce this subject and more importantly, introduce the dozen or so people that committed their last six months of their lives this last year on this project. We will have a presentation on the actual recommendations by a couple of our board members, but I wanted to introduce the board or the task force here tonight. Some of the folks are with us, others aren't, but I want you to know who they were. I chaired the committee. Kelly Dunn, City Council member, was also on the committee. Latonya Graves, President of Blackhawk County NAACP, I don't think she's here this evening. Melissa Heston, Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission, I'm guessing she will be here. Miki Johnson, retired educator and President of the Waterloo Community Foundation, participated. Paul Lee, Director, he's here, Director, St. Stevens, a Witness Catholic Student Center, past immediate, immediate past President of the CEO of Iowa Knights of Columbus and current Chair of the Cedar Falls Civil Service Commission. Andy Petit, Superintendent of Cedar Falls Schools. Lisa Sisterhand, Public Planner for Blackhawk County Public Health and former Project Coordinator at Cedar Falls Community Schools, and she's here tonight as well. Felicia Smith-Nalls, Neighborhood Services Coordinator for Waterloo. Ishan Vajpayee, Managing Partner and Attorney with Ball, Kirkman Home and a member of the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission, and he's here this evening as well. These folks spent about four hours a month for the last six months working as a large group and then breaking into three subgroups that met probably just about as many hours. And to me, that's an example of what makes Cedar Falls such a great place, is to have people interested in the topic, willing to take of their time and their talents to help the city work through a challenging topic. So I can't thank those people enough for the time that they've spent, and I think you'll be impressed with the report that they'll share with us this evening. I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Jen Rodenbeck, City Staff, who kind of moved everything around so that we could make this happen. Craig Birdy was on the committee. And for sure, I want to thank Katie Turhune, who was a staff member here on staff, and she did all the minutes and kept us moving forward. So I want to thank all of them. And then bottom line is, yeah, I was the chairperson of this, but I called the meetings to order and got out of the way. And about three weeks into, three meetings into the project, we realized the issues were so varied and complicated that we really needed some outside help. The city was kind enough to help us hire from Iowa State University Omar Padilla. He's not here, but he was at every one of our meetings. And Amy Vineyard-Wiedeman, who is here tonight, and we can't thank her enough for making this project what it is, making the report readable and understandable and moving us forward. So it was a collective effort that I'm really proud of. I'm anxious for you to learn more about it. And with that, I think Lisa is going to start the presentation, correct?
All right. Thank you, Frank. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Sasterhan, and I am the Public Health Planner for Blackhawk County. So I guess, I think, do we need to start the slides? Or, oops. Okay. So I started my professional career in public health about 20 years ago. Our focus back then was changing behaviors to increase health. Eat less, exercise more, don't smoke. This worked for some, especially for those that had resources and support for change. When I came back to public health a few years ago, much had changed. Prevention is part of health, but not as much as where you live, go to school, play, work, and worship. But not even these factors account for all the differences in health. Race and the systems that gave us inequities and resources and opportunities are also factors. I know this isn't a public health lecture, but it's health that we want. Healthy people and healthy communities, whether it's economic health, civic health, or the well-being of individuals. I love Cedar Falls. When we moved here almost 20 years ago, it felt like home. I felt like I belonged. As I reflect now on why I felt that way, I find myself wondering that no matter how unintentional it is, that we tend to gravitate to what we know and feel comfortable with, we and the communities we live in are better off when that sense of belonging can be felt by anyone, anyone who wants to live, visit, work, or go to school here. I find myself thinking that as important as bike trails, fast internet, a vibrant downtown, and good schools are to a community, healthy communities also have individuals and organizations that are willing to step up and change practices that are not welcoming. Step up to become more aware of the harm, intentional or unintentional, that our Black and Brown neighbors experience. Working toward diversity, equity, and inclusion matters because communities of the future are one in which we all thrive. The 2018 news that the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area was named the worst place for Black Americans to live was painful. Disbelieved by some, confirmed with what they lived for others, and for some, the news was just irrelevant or ignored. What we do know is that the news propelled many in the community to start talking about race, about inequities, and was one of the factors in the forming of this task force by Mayor Green. While the mayor's charge to the task team was clear, it wasn't easy. It actually could be easy because we could have just copy-pasted from the multitude of other cities that already have equity plans. But developing guidance and recommendations that stand a chance of not being relegated to a headline and then just a shelf in someone's office means we needed to take a step back, look at the current state of equity in Cedar Falls, use the expertise and lived experiences of our task team to begin shaping initial guidance and recommendations that resonate for our here and now. Our task force members that Frank had mentioned were nothing short of amazing. They, we, we showed up, meeting after meeting, engaged in difficult conversations, listened and learned from each other. Part of being in the work of equity and inclusion means admitting what you don't know and recognizing that everyone comes to this work with the intersectionality of not just who we are professionally, but also as mothers, fathers, some who grew up here, others that have lived and worked in more diverse communities, and everything else that makes up our identities. Through our meetings, we got to know each other. In fact, I understand that some may be even organizing a group camping trip. One thing became apparent early on during our meetings, and Frank had alluded to this too. Despite the excellent support from City Staff, thank you all of you, we weren't going to be successful in meeting the mayor's charge without outside facilitation. Amy Vineyard-Wiedeman and Omar Padilla from Iowa State University came in at our third meeting, and even though we didn't always like it, they pushed us to make decisions about the scope of what could be accomplished during the limited timeframe and made sure that everyone's voice was heard in the process. As you've read in the report and will hear a few times tonight, this report and presentation are just first steps to an ongoing investment in equity for our community. Our initial recommendations include concrete steps that could be incorporated into city activities now, but most are recommendations to take deeper steps. One recommendation that our task force members felt strongly about was the need for public engagement, an opportunity for anyone to respond to this initial report and share their comments and lived experiences. But this has to be done with thought and planning into making sure that everyone has an opportunity to contribute and one that honors what is shared by having strategies in place to bridge the current recommendations for what is shared. Our next few slides show some of the relevant data points explored by the committee. We used 2020 census data where it was available. This chart shows our population compared to the county and state. As you see, Cedar Falls is growing and accounted for most of the population growth in the county between 2010 and 2020. When we look at our community by race and ethnicity, we see that we are becoming more diverse. In fact, every non-white racial group category had an increase over the last decade. It's also clear from the data that Cedar Falls is not as diverse as the rest of the county. A point about the census and the race and ethnicity data. There are lots of resources that explain it, but for example, my co-presenter and I probably checked different boxes for race, but could have both checked yes for Hispanic origin if that's how we self-identified. Many of us in Cedar Falls have some tie to the University of Northern Iowa and enjoy the vibrance and diversity of having a large university in our town. So it's no surprise that the 18 to 24 age group is the predominant category in Cedar Falls. This graph doesn't show it, but in comparison, the county's 18 to 24 age group is only 15.6% of the population, while in Cedar Falls, it's almost double. While you and I student population has decreased over the years, the non-white portion of the undergraduate student body has steadily increased as a percent of the population. We wanted to share our working definition of what it means to be welcoming, to be a welcoming and inclusive community because this is really our collective vision, or guiding star, if you will, for the kind of community that we want to call home. While the vision or guiding star is really about transformational change, actionable, we have to do the work. Actionable steps are required to get there. So you'll see the six recommendations on the screen, six general recommendations. The remaining part of our presentation is walking through these, as well as the work of our three subcommittees. So now I'll turn it over to my friend, fellow task force member, and I think the leader of the camping, camping trip, Paul Lee.
As an Eagle Scout, I'm always up for the opportunity to go camping. So we have six recommendations that kind of encompass our work over the last six months. The first of which is to establish, have council establish a Cedar Falls Equity Committee. This committee would work with city officials, staff, and other boards and commissions to help ensure that we have an infrastructure in place that supports and advances diversity, inclusion, and equity for all, that eliminates barriers and creates a commitment to unbiased programs and services that's effective and inclusive in being engaging with our community and collaborates with local and regional partners. The second recommendation, develop a Cedar Falls Equity Vision and Plan. Once this committee is established, we want this committee to be empowered to create a plan inclusive of all the works of both city government and just our overall feelings for our city as well, making sure that this plan ensures that Cedar Falls normalizes, organizes, and operational is in a commitment to equitable future where every resident can truly live, work, and play. Recommendation number three, invest in organizational capacity and infrastructure. Yes, we can put together bright individuals to serve on a committee, but these individuals come from a wide array of backgrounds and they have other commitments. So this process, if going to be done successfully, is going to need organizational capacity, infrastructure. That could mean hiring of city staff. It could be bringing in outside expertise that can really drill down into data and other tools to help our city truly be one that is truly equitable for everyone. Number four, be a partner for transformative change. It's one thing to just throw some money at a situation, it's another thing to actually be in the work of the situation. And that's what we're challenging city staff, city operations, and our citizens as well, to actually be in the weeds of creating an environment that is equitable. Working with other elected officials across the county, working with partners such as the Department of Health, the School Districts, the University of Northern Iowa, Grove Cedar Valley, to truly coordinate and support equity plans and initiatives across all our industries and particulars. Number five, create public engagement opportunities that are truly welcoming and inclusive. The work that we do in committee is only as great as if the public is actually engaged with it. Otherwise, we're just doing something that has no value. So let's make sure that we're creating opportunities for conversations that inform what we're doing as far as planning for equity, making sure that the conversations are held in a safe environment where people feel that their voice is being heard, their experiences is being respected, and that the outcome is something that we can take and do something with as we move forward. Number six is to host and collaborate in public education about equity. So we can collaborate with other groups, we can hear from other groups, but we stand at a great opportunity to be one of the voices when it comes to equity in our city amongst businesses, social and fraternal organization, but also throughout the county and other endeavors. We can bring from our experiences, past, present, and future, and help shape the conversation of what equity looks like in our metropolitan service area for generations to come. So those are our six main recommendations. As Frank alluded to, in addition to the work of the main group, we broke into three subgroups to highlight three specific areas. We began with the large conversation on what things, what avenues, whether it be transportation, infrastructure, and we settled on education, housing, and policing. So each task member took an assignment. We worked with various city staff to really look at those three areas and other things that we could do, both as city operations, but also if there's partnership were applicable, to advance the cause of equity. And I'm going to turn it back over to Lisa to begin to divulge into what those recommendations are.
Education. So we recognize that you and I and other educational institutions in the Cedar Valley are also focused on equity and increasing inclusive welcoming environments. While the focus of this report is for the Cedar Falls Community School District, as you saw, as Paul shared, a full equity plan for the city would need to include additional input from this sector. With that caveat, the task team was eager to learn about the work of the district's Equity Task Force and its Equity Action Plan. After studying data about the district, the education task team of Frank Dara, Latonya Graves, Felicia Smith, and Doctors Johnson and Petit is recommending that the district increase access to opportunities for all students, including creating pathways, so that enrollment in upper-level courses like calculus or physics increases for students that have traditionally not enrolled in those classes. The team also identified that there are variances in how and how often students are disciplined when looking at the data by race and ethnicity. The same goes for attendance. The district recognizes that it's not enough to say the data just is what it is. They recognize that trauma, systemic issues that perpetuate inequities, and bias, all play a role in who succeeds and who is at risk of being left behind. One of the actions that the team is recommending to achieve the goals I just shared is to look at ways that hiring practices could be modified and lead to a more diverse workplace. Finally, the team also developed recommendations for the broader community, including celebrating the diversity of our community and deepening partnerships. The housing task team of myself, along with Melissa Heston and Ishan Vajpayee, excuse me, and with support from city staff, spent a considerable amount of time on the data piece. We were in agreement that historically there have been past policies and practices that may have contributed to where we are today, a city with limited affordable housing options and a community with limited diversity. Did you know that there's a website that you can go to that you can actually pull up copies of restricted covenants that existed in Blackhawk County? Covenants that along with specifying how many trees to plant, or if you can add a shed or not, also specify that only Caucasians could live in the neighborhood, or that, quote, "real estate can, shall not be sold, rented, or occupied to any Negro or Indian or persons of African, Chinese, or Japanese race and nationality," end of quote. For many of us, this was in effect during our parents' lifetime. So what can we do? We are recommending a focus on how to provide housing variety by completing a housing needs assessment. Educate landlords and residents about the connections between housing and the health of cities, one that has students showing up for school ready to learn and workers able to reach their full potential. We offer concrete recommendations about ways to increase the availability of affordable housing and ways that those looking for affordable housing can find support programs. Finally, we encourage the city to consider diversity, inclusion, and affordability when reviewing new housing development plans.
The third committee was the Policing Subcommittee made up of Kelly Dunn, Will Frost, myself, and Chief Birdy, the police chief, was our liaison. And we focused on getting to know the basis of our policing operations in the city. We were surprised to know that, you know, trainings that have been taking place for 25 years on undoing racism, and urban potential training that have been taking place by our officers for over 35 years, and some of the other endeavors that the Police Department has been doing for decades that simply no one else knows about. We were surprised to learn about that. So our recommendations really focus on operations within the department. Continue to focus on those trainings that help our officers that may or may not have had a background in embracing other cultures, be able to identify the prejudices that all of us carry, and how to not have that play out into their professional work as a member of our Police Department. I'm looking at ways that we can gauge complaints from citizens, both electronically and in person, and not just by going to the Public Safety Building. How insensitive is that if someone has a complaint about public safety, to tell them the only place they can go is to the exact place that they have an issue with? We should be able to, as a city of our size, be able to have opportunities at every one of our public buildings for people to be able to file a complaint and to be able to do it electronically, because that's the modern era that we're in today. Let's talk about diverse workforce. We're very fortunate that we have a diverse workforce when it comes to male, female in our department. But are we advertising properly in other avenues across our state and our region where we could attract more ethnic and racial diversity on our police rings? We also are suggesting that we conduct data reviews on traffic stops and arrest data and disaggregate it by race and ethnicity. I want to highlight our marketing efforts. You know, we as a city, we have a number of channels that we have relied on to get our information out there. But as you know, there's only a small sect of our community that actually finds our information on the channels that we're doing. We need to be at a point where we are being very intentional in reaching people where they are, not making people come to us, because that's the only way we can tell people the work that we're doing in a manner that they are ready to receive. Yes, that might mean putting more organizational structure into that. It might mean spending a few more resources to make that happen. But if we're truly going to show our citizens and the broader community what we're doing, then we've got to invest that time and capital in that. So we have three requests of you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. First, at your next City Council meeting, not the one tonight, but I think the one in a couple of weeks, we are requesting that you receive and file this report and its recommendations. The second thing, when you begin, when the council begins its goal-setting, we hope that this report goes with you to those goal-setting sessions. We honestly hope that every single thing we recommend in here is incorporated into next year's goal-setting. Finally, which is just as important as everything else we've said, we need to close this conversation, which means we need you, as the members of the City Council and you, Mr. Mayor, who convened this task force, to then come back to the task force and engage with us in a meeting where you explain your reasoning as to what endeavors went into goal-setting for the upcoming year, and what endeavors do not, and the why, so that we can continue this conversation going forward. It's no question why I, as a black male, living, working, and residing in Cedar Falls, finds this as something to be engaged with. There's no question why the members of our committee find the work of racial equity and equity overall something to be passionate about. My question to the members of our City Council and to our mayor is what's your passion behind equity? Is your passion just because it's the catchphrase of today? Is the passion because it's the moment that we're in now? Or beyond the title, beyond the role, is this something that you see that we need to challenge as our community? Is this a fight worth having? Is this the opportunity for you and I, the members of the task force in our city, to truly make sure we are living, working, and playing in an environment where people can be judged, as Dr. Martin Luther King would say, "not by the color of their skin, but by the content of the character." At one of our last meetings, I had the opportunity, well, the task force, I had the opportunity to give some kind of overall comments. Our facilitator went around to each person and said if we had grown out of the experience and something that, to take away. And I like to share with you what I shared with them, and that is a couple lines from one of my favorite poems. Some of you may know it. It was written in 1900 and put to music shortly thereafter and sang by a group of school children in honor of our 16th President Abraham Lincoln's birthday. This poem is called Lift Every Voice and Sing. It's a poem that speaks to what should be our collective resolve to take the things that have happened in the past with the things that have happened in the past with the things that have happened in the present, and look over the horizon to the future. And I think that's the true spirit of the work of the task force over the last six months. It's to look over that horizon to see where we can march on till victory is won. With that, I thank you so much for the time, and we'll engage in your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate those very eloquent words. And I also would like to invite for the council, we have about, oh, a half hour to have an open discussion about the findings and to bring up specific questions. So I'll turn it over to council first. Councilor Harding?
Go for it. Well, first of all, thank you. I wondered, do you have more specifics when it comes to the aspect of us starting a board or a commission and equity board or equity commission? Can you go into any more specifics about, did you talk about, how would this be comprised? How many members would this be overseen by, coordinated by a new staff member? I know you mentioned that. Do you have any more specifics on what you, as a task force, would like to see, or is it just kind of open-ended for us to, to look at going forward?
I would say that we talked lightly on structure, that it would be made up of citizens from Cedar Falls. I don't know all of state code to see if it would allow for citizens of other cities. I would say that as a member, it was highly effective on this conversation of equity to have a wide array of perspectives at the table. This would be something that should be, should be staff-supported, and as a point of personal pride, I would say not by a member of our HR team. While equity definitely needs to be part of, you know, HR affairs, this equity thing is much more than just human resources. This is looking, you know, city operations from sanitation crew all the way throughout, and there probably is someone out there that would be best suited to be in a staff role that we don't already have on city staff.
And taken from that, I didn't see a recommendation to, or maybe I missed it because there was a lot of information, but is there a recommendation to continue the task force? Or would the equity committee really be the continuation of that? Or both, working in tandem? Thoughts on that?
The equity committee would be the evolution of this racial equity task force.
Okay. Thanks.
And then as a follow-on to that question, you had several members of the Human Rights Commission on this task force. And was there discussion about how you would de-conflict or avoid having a duplication of what's occurring in the Human Rights Commission's work compared to the equity committee?
Light conversation on it, primarily that this equity committee would work, you know, across all boards and commissions, because I think there's an element of equity that needs to occur in every single board and commission that we have in the city. But the roles would be distinctly different and clearly identified, so that everyone knows if it's something that deals with overall equity, or something that deals with more human rights, which direction to go in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Lee as well. Is there some things that you would like to change to make it better? This, this committee that you were on and the task force? I know that you and I had had some concerns when we talked before on who you had in from the city, if you wanted to reduce that number and have it be more just regular citizens?
So if, if I was designing, and I don't, I won't speak for the rest of the task force, I'll just speak for Paul Lee. If I was designing this equity committee, I would make sure that it represented all the citizens of Cedar Falls. I think the, the work of council was important, and it was very insightful for us to have Councilmen's Dara and Dunn present as far as a process standpoint. If, I mean, I guess it's mayor's decision if council individuals serve on this committee. I don't know if it's a requirement to have a member of council present. You know, I think that duly qualified citizens can get the job done. It was very helpful to have them there as far as process, but I think that's something that we can invite members of council to a committee meeting, just like, you know, other boards and commissions have counselors there from time to time. But I think it's very important that if this committee is going to have a shot at survival, that we build the staff organizational structure behind it. I also think that it's important, if this committee is going to be here, and if we're going to take this seriously, that our department leaders and our elected officials actually know what's going on more than just an A report. And that might mean actually showing up to a meeting every once in a while. That might mean placing a phone call, saying, "Hey, what's going on?" Because equity, if we do this right, should be about everything. Everything should fall under a lens of equity to make sure that we, as a city, both our operations, our individuals, and then the overall city are guided in this, that same path.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Miller?
I want to say thanks to each of you guys, and those that are not here, for sitting in on this and participating. Very hard conversations, I'm certain of, everywhere, but especially in Cedar Falls, Iowa. So I don't know that I'm going to be a part of the goal-setting session here this year as I'm stepping down, but I certainly hope that this council recognizes the importance of this as those discussions go on. And I, and I hope we put some, some effort into this. I think, as mentioned earlier, it's easy to have a committee, it's easy to, you know, show up and do the stuff, but to really look at this and make an impact in Cedar Falls, Iowa, I, I think it's the next step to this, and I'm glad we've gotten this far.
Other thoughts or discussion?
I just voted.
He voted yes.
What a surprise.
I guess as I thought about the, what's next kind of thing, we just took, there were huge steps, but pretty tiny steps towards where we want to eventually get. I mean, we just started the discussion, so I think it'd be difficult to clearly define any committee or any commission at this point as to what its ultimate goal is going to be, but view it more as continuing the discussion, but maybe with older, with other questions, like what is it going to look like going forward? And all I'm doing is trying to caution the council that I'm not sure in one goal-setting session that we're going to have a clear picture of what this is going to look like going forward. I'd want it to be seen as the next step in an ongoing conversation about getting where we eventually want to get. But it's real easy to think, well, let's just appoint a committee, and they'll come up with the solutions, and we'll go on to something else. And I said this to the committee several times when we kind of got frustrated with not moving very fast. I'm so proud of what this group has done, because in really a total of 20 hours combined together, we have had open discussion about racial equity in Cedar Falls. We've had more in those 20 hours than we have in the past 200 years. So I think we need to think in terms of, what a great first step. Let's be cautious about our next steps, but keep moving forward with it. And I'm just saying that I don't know that we can come up with a clear, I think, another ongoing committee, what is its relationship with the Human Rights Commission, but still not have clear definition. You know, we even talked about a staff person, but do we really want to hire somebody until we know what their task is going to be? So to me, the recommendation of an ongoing discussion, more structure to it, more staff dedicated time, more expertise, but not necessarily, no, we're just going to now have a, hire a person and have a committee that's going to solve the problems. Does that make sense, that it be more, what's the next step? But I don't want to lose it.
So there are a couple of recommendations that you had brought forward, and those, certainly with next council meeting, November 1st will be the receive and file. That council will bring that officially into the record. And from there, this will be a focus as part of our goal-setting session, that we'll take the recommendations and see where it makes sense to fit them in. There'll be certainly council discussion on how we resource those recommendations, which ones we adopt, which ones we don't. And certainly we'll, we'll note, if there are ones that aren't implemented, to understand why, and to bring that back to the task force. I think, as Mr. Lee mentioned, it is very important to circle back with the commission or the, the task force to let them understand what's been implemented now, what may be down the road, what may be the council isn't interested in at this time. But from, from what I saw, all very reasonable requests. There are some things that can be implemented without council requirements, such as the, the complaint process, which I've, I've agreed for some time now, that it doesn't make sense to go to the Public Safety Building to complain about public safety. If, if they're intimidated already, they don't want to go into the building. So that's one, I believe, we can, we can bring forward without having, the council to have to make a decision on that. Other ones certainly will require council discussion, because it'll involve resources, funds, and to see how to, how to cover that, and just to make sure that it is a council priority going forward. So certainly a Herculean task these last several months, partly because it had not been done in the city before, and we are feeling our way through to see how this kind of a process looks. Your efforts were admirable. I also want to thank Amy and Omar for their facilitation of this very difficult work. And what, what this partly shows us is that a, a process, a task force like this can have positive results, and can have difficult dialogue, and move us forward in specific topics. And I'm very eager to see us move with additional topics down the road. As you alluded to, infrastructure, transportation, other topics need to be addressed as well. And I'm very confident in our community's ability to do that successfully. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
And for the, the many months. So that takes us over to item two, which is downtown public parking. And we'll start off with City Clerk Jackie Danielson. We'll have 40 minutes set for that, and it looks like we've got some, some additional time available in our budget. So Ms. Danielson, the floor is yours.
Get down there that low there. So, so if we can get to the first side here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, the city council is here to discuss public parking in the downtown district. During the discussion, there was included in the packet the final report of the downtown parking study, as well as a timeline of recommendations and improvements that were completed following the study. Of course, in the interest of time and the benefit of those attending the presentation here, will be just a summary of that timeline to allow for further discussion. So I'm just going to take you back to the beginning. In response to concerns expressed by downtown businesses, city council during the FY19 goal-setting identified an objective to develop a downtown parking plan to maximize on-street parking and public parking, and then also budgeted $50,000 for an outside parking study in the downtown district. So on October 1st, city council approved a contract with WGI, and they conducted a parking study of the downtown district. Excuse me, I'm kind of fighting a little bit of a cold. On February 15th of 2019, WGI presented the final report of the parking study, and city council approved the recommendations and then directed staff to implement, implement them. So the following slides are going to illustrate the recommendations that were taken, and the recommendations, the slides are exactly the same slides that were in the report, and then how we responded to the recommendations. And then some points you'll see may seem similar, like we're almost repeating some of them, but some of them were short-term, and some of them were long-term, so of course they're going to overlap a little bit. So, so we'll start with the first one. Okay. So the big picture plan. So identifying empowering parking management leadership. We accomplished that. We identified and have now a designated parking supervisor. She is designated to the daily operations. She's here tonight, Marcy Brightbach. Negotiate with private lot owners to develop more formalized program to allow for public parking during evenings and special events. Of course, you know that we made a partnership with Viking Pump and created 69 additional public spaces to be used after hours. Develop a parking master plan that includes College Hill area under unified operations plan. There was a parking study also completed for College Hill, and we coordinated the implementation of technology, signage, and many of those things, so that it's, it's all under the same plan or under the same system. So it's, you're not going from one district to the other, and it's two separate pieces of technology. So reestablish a parking committee or advisory board for making, policymaking and oversight. There was a parking technical committee formed early on in, as soon as the study was completed, between Community Main Street and city staff. We met twice a month during the implementation, had a lot of discussions, talked about all the recommendations, the plans, how we were going to do it, the communication, how we were going to get the message out to people, and trying to coordinate that between the two agencies. So invest in new technologies for paid city lots. We did purchase pay stations. We have a virtual permit system, so it's all by license plate. You don't have to have a paper permit or anything like that. It's all electronic. The, of course, the payment would be also available on a mobile app, even though it was still coin, it allowed coins, so. And then new enforcement technology to where we could do that license-based, license plate-based enforcement, and be able to talk between the pay station and the handhelds, so. So more of these were until, until a public-private ramp can be identified, keep on-street parking free, but better enforced. On-street parking has always been free throughout the whole process, and it still remains free. That has never changed. Revise enforcement hours, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 8:00 p.m. We did accomplish that. And then we added an additional part-time staff to hire the covered, hired to cover the expanded hours. And of course, you'll see the next one, and I won't go through all of them, but there was a variety of different parking options, whether it was two-hour, three-hour, 15-minute, and all those. So we implemented all of those as recommended by July of 2019. And then, of course, I talked about the electronic permit, permit technology. So now we have virtual permits for the municipal lots. Create a fine structure that provides relief for first-time offenders. And then, so, and that has been our policy, the first-time offenders were issued warnings with no fines. So we move on to the next piece. Monetize all city surface lots based on the following policies. Eliminate time lots in all the lots, which we did. August 2019, all of the meters were removed that still existed in some of the lots, and the signs for the time limits were removed from the lots. Of course, two years later, pay stations were removed, and the four-hour free parking was reestablished. So kind of back to where we started there. Install license plate-based multi-space pay stations, and of course, as I mentioned, those were installed in 2020. And then there was the charge of 50 cents an hour, and there was a max initially recommended. But throughout our discussions with the task force, Community Main Street had gotten feedback from the downtown businesses. They were concerned about the $3 max. So we, we went ahead and removed that. As well as, you'll see down below, there was a flat rate that was also removed. So one part of the universal permits was that we needed to get rid of the permits that were, would allow you to park in any lot, and then just have them for specific lots. And then to allocate 20% of the spaces, so we wouldn't allow to sell out more than 20% in each lot. Another issue was overnight parking. There, we primarily, previously, there was a ban on Main Street and on the side streets adjacent to Main Street. And throughout the study, it was determined that we should allow the parking on the side streets. Well, still maintaining it on Main Street, but allow the parking overnight on the side streets in an effort to encourage good choices, basically. And then add new on-street parking wherever it's feasible. It's going to come up. In July of 2019, we went around in the district, and we found where we could add 31 spaces on the street. And so those were added. Some of those were through diagonal parking options or areas maybe where they weren't configured as well as they could have been. So we added 31 spaces on the street there. This was our immediate action plan, three months to one year. And here's where you might see a little bit of overlap from what we've already talked about, but I wanted to go through the recommendation slides as they were in the plan. So remove the existing meters from the lots. They were at a higher operating cost than what they were bringing in. So those old meters were removed in 2019. I think they were probably 40 years old at least. Most of them couldn't even take anything more than a dime. So they were, they were pretty old. So they were costing a lot more than what they were worth. Eliminate the four-hour time limit in the public lots. And of course, we did that, pulled the signs to get prepared for the new system. And then perform detailed analysis to add additional on-street parking. And I got this kind of goofed up a little bit. It's going to say, created 100 unrestricted public parking spaces. That's adding the 31 that we found on the street, as well as the 69 to be used in the Viking Pump lot. But that's still 100 unrestricted, unrestricted, no time limits or anything like that. So completely unrestricted, free. Revise city code to change on-street time limits and revise the enforcement schedule to evenings and Saturday, and changes to the overnight ban. Those ordinance were adopted in June 2019, so I'm sure you would recall that. Develop communication plan, print media, web, and parking brochures. Basically, just communicate the changes as well as possible. And we did. We did print media, brochures, websites, social media, Currents newsletters. We did a couple cable TV spots. And we had continuous communication throughout the implementation. I think I went back, and I believe there was an article in the Currents newsletter at every one of them. There was something about changes in parking. So just trying to keep that message and get it out there. And of course, this was all shared with Community Main Street and the downtown businesses as well. Purchase and install multi-space parking or pay stations in the city lots. On October 2019, City Council approved a contract for those pay stations. And then, of course, the last one references the Hunter Block Alley improvements, which are very nice. That project was completed in 2019 as well. Excuse me. Adopt pay-by-mobile capability concurrently with the purchase of the pay stations. They also had, like I said, the coin option as well. As you know, in January 2020, we implemented that as part of the equipment and technology purchase. And then we had a go-live date of September 1st, 2019, for the paid lots. We didn't quite make that, but in January 2020, the equipment was installed. But the go-live was delayed due to vendor shutdowns who were out on the West Coast. So they were getting hit a little sooner than us. October 2020, paid parking was finally implemented. On December 2020, of course, pandemic hit, and City Council suspended the paid parking. And then in August 2021, City Council reestablished the four-hour free parking in the lots, and then the pay stations were removed. Continue to monitor the occupancy and utilization levels on a routine basis. We did actually get occupancy counts completed in November 2019. We had split these recommendations up in two phases, phase one and a phase two. Phase one was basically all of the on-street parking, signage, and things like that, changes along that line. And we did that, and we did do some counts. So we did get one of them done. Upgrade existing handhelds to full wireless. As I mentioned, part of the technology purchase, we were able to do that as well. They function much better than the old ones. Continuously monitor parking utilization through monthly and quarterly occupancy counts. Like I mentioned, we did do it in 2019 after phase one. We had scheduled counts for one month following phase two, but they were canceled. However, we did actually just complete a set of counts this weekend. So look forward to seeing what those show. Perform parking impact analyses for future development projects. As part of the parking study, you may have noticed that the consultant also completed analysis for the Hampton Inn, the West First Street project, and the River Place development at full buildout. So they already factored all of that in when they were doing the study. Complete process for downtown visioning and zoning, including evaluation of residential parking requirements. Of course, that's a discussion that's currently in process, but not part of this discussion. Continue phase streetscape, lighting, pedestrian walkability. Also currently under construction, what's been completed is fabulous. Consider formalized relationship with Community Main Street for ongoing downtown parking management. We have continued the parking technical committee meetings. Even late in the pandemic, we started meeting via Zoom, just to make sure that we could keep the conversations going. Ran the public parking system and developed continuous marketing and communications. So we use, we use the Park Smarter app, website for maps, and the permits and information. We continue to use social media, Currents newsletter, cable TV spots, anything we can do to get the message out there. And even with the most recent changes, we went through all that again, just to make sure that everybody, you know, the information was everywhere, and hopefully, you know, you'd catch it somewhere. So information on special event parking. This is something, a conversation that came up later, but we decided that it made sense to add it to the public event permit application. So if an organizer is having an event downtown, it's going to involve blocking off public parking streets, whatever, then it's kind of their responsibility to determine where's the alternative, alternative parking going to be? Are you going to have someone to direct them? Are you going to have signs helping people to find other parking that is now unavailable? So updated wayfinding and identification signage, of course, as I mentioned, for phase one, July 2019, all the signage was updated, and it's a lot more visible. The, I don't know, they used to have lots named like A, B, and H, and people had no idea what that meant. So we actually named them for the streets that they reside on. So it's East Second, East Third, it just makes sense. So all those were renamed and resigned, and all of the street parking resigned with color-coded toppers and to kind of coordinate with the map. So if you had a map, you could look at the colored toppers, and you could see, oh, this is two-hour parking, or this is three-hour parking, by just a color association. So. Did I skip that? No, okay. So the last slide is just a long-term, ongoing plan. Of course, I couldn't put anything on there. And you will notice that the majority of them are currently being discussed as part of the downtown zoning code. I do not have any recommendations tonight, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have during your discussion tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. This was brought up as a council question to have a committee discussion about the public parking. So I'll open it up to council members if you want to begin with questions or comments. Who'd like to start us off?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Miller.
We've been talking about parking for at least the eight years I've been on here, and I'm certain it's happened long before that. I would love to see us find a compromise, working with Community Main Street, business owners, and the council to at least move in a direction of some sort before I get off the council. And I know that maybe that decision doesn't happen tonight, but I think it's going to take a compromise on everybody's part. I mean, we've pushed and then backtracked on paid parking. And at least in my opinion, I don't know the, how we, how we potentially fund a ramp? How do we do anything if we don't have a paid parking system? Because over time, that ramp is going to need to be taken care of. It's going to need maintenance. It's going to be, I don't see any way we can do that myself. I would love, I can't say I would love to see a parking ramp, because in all honesty, I don't know that a parking ramp's going to solve a lot of the problems that we have or the perceived problems that we have downtown. If that is the only thing that's going to move this conversation forward, then I would like to see us find a way to make that happen, whether that is funded out of the TIF, the downtown TIF. Let's just set a date and help everybody out, we move the conversation forward. And I think there has to be a compromise there with paid parking, but let's have a discussion. Let's try and move this forward, because we keep going back and forth. And I understand, you know, we made, I've made the motion to remove the paid parking in the parking lots at Community Main Street's request, right? So I'm part of the backtracking and whatnot. But I think downtown isn't what it was 20 years ago, and I think we've got a whole lot of people to thank for that. But moving forward, if a parking ramp is the only thing that's going to provide, I guess, vertical options for parking, then I think we should look at it. I think every development that happens downtown could play a part in that parking ramp. And I think everybody's concerned with every new development that comes downtown, and I do think a parking ramp would provide an option for, if you can't park your business on your lot, then the parking ramp provides an opportunity for that. I think ultimately, no matter where that parking ramp goes, somebody's not going to be happy with it, because it's still going to be a two-block, or a three-block, or a four-block walk somewhere. But nonetheless, as far as more development happening downtown, it provides an option.
Thank you. Councilor Harding.
Sure. To piggyback on what Councilmember Miller said, you know, the parking issue is highly dependent on who you talk to and what their perception of parking is, which is fine. But as a developing city, we have the river project going in. We have people that are going to be coming from out of town. We are looking to make a more dense area. And then if you do look around at other cities that we're looking to borrow good ideas from, they all have parking ramps. It's something that someone can come from out of town, park the car there the entire day, walk around. So my thoughts would be, well, not my thoughts, but my questions really would be, how do we make that come to fruition? Talk about what the options are. How do we talk about what are the possibilities for the ramp? What are the funding options? Are there modular designs that would be, that we could look at if we didn't need it, say, 30 years from now, or for some reason, if we don't, that they could be modular and used for something else? Where would they go? There's so many questions to be asked. My one and only question is, when can we talk about it, and how can we talk about it? How can we put a date on it? Do we have to, and that's more of a staff question, do we have to put something unfunded in the CIP? Do we have to make a referral? What's the best way to go about the next steps to really look at the possibilities for the future of Cedar Falls?
So Mr. Gaines, would you be able to offer any insight on that for timing and how that process would work?
Yeah, you really put me on the spot there. Again, going back eight years, 16 years, 20 years, however long you want to be with regard to parking, and I don't know that we're going to solve it tonight. But I do think there's some opportunities out there to maybe put together some type of a committee that would look at parking, visit maybe other communities. There's some success stories out there with a ramp. There's success, or there's some failure stories out there with ramps. And I think you would actually have to go and try to pick out good pieces of parking management to look at what fits our community and how do we set that up? So I think there is a way forward. I do think it's going to take a lot of give and take, as Mr. Miller said. Building a ramp is really not going to be successful without a paid parking system. But I also think that the give and take here is if you have a paid parking system, you probably have to deliver some type of additional parking stalls for the merchants downtown.
Okay, thank you.
So would that be something that we should do at goal-setting, set aside for goal-setting to talk about the future? I mean, I understand we can't solve it tonight, and we're not going to put a place marker on there, but I just want to make sure that, I guess, people feel comfortable that it is going to happen, and we kind of, you know. So what would your recommendation be? Goal-setting topic or referral for the future?
Just kind of shooting from the hip here a little bit is, I would, I would get with Jackie and some others, and we would put together a plan, run that plan by the mayor, and hopefully get a lot of input by Community Main Street to put together very similar to what was done on the racial equity task force. Put a group of stakeholders in there, and let's discuss it, and realize that there can't be any preconceived notions going into this, because there's a lot of give and take. And then come back to the council with that and start looking at items for the CIP and putting together not only a plan for what that parking would look like, but also a, some type of a schedule that goes along with it. And there's a number of items, and many of the council members up here have been talking about different things. Councilmember Cruz had brought up a pay-in-lua system, and there's, there's some really good things about that, but there's some things that are a little bit tricky, too. So.
My final thing, and I'll let other people talk. I, and it's a tough topic. I realize that you could go both sides of the coin. I just want to make sure that, you know, we look at all the options. That's really it, and plan on looking at the options and not just kick it down the road. That's my main concern. So I'm done for now.
Thank you. And it probably would make sense also, as we look at what some of those vehicles are, no pun intended, the options are for funding. There certainly could include TIF financing. There's a range of economic tools we have to apply to something like that. So that would be something that we'd need to make sure all the stakeholders in that notional group are aware of, like what we can and can't do legally with funding. So other thoughts? Councilor Dunn?
So would our, the paid, if for some reason paid parking went back in place, would those, the equipment that we took out, is that still, could we still use that?
Okay. We do still have that equipment.
Okay. All right.
But I don't know for how long.
Okay.
But honestly, if you're going to get into a paid system, you're talking, it's probably how many years down the road by the time you get into a parking facility? You're probably going to have to upgrade to new technology by then anyway.
Sure. Okay. My other concern, and I don't think this is a, this isn't my original, my, I know other people maybe have this concern as well. If we build a parking ramp, I do know that I hear people say, well, you know, I want to park and go to the theater, and then I want to park and go to a restaurant down the way. the way." That's probably not going to be doable even with a parking ramp. So, maybe we need to look at other things like, is there some kind of a system to help people move around our downtown, be it public or working with a private company or individual to move people around? Because I think this reality is, even with a parking ramp, you're probably not going to just be able to park in front of or be right in front of the building you want to go into. That's not how downtowns work. That's really not even how a mall works or a big-box store. You do have to walk. And while I have...I do have concern with people with mobility issues. I want them to have access. Folks that don't, I mean, it is reality that you...I don't want people to think that they're going to be right in front of the business they want to go into. I don't know that that's ever going to happen. That's not how a downtown works.
Councilor Harding?
I do agree that it's not going to...but just to kind of like flip off the other side of that coin, as we do look forward, do I feel like we need a parking ramp right now? No. I personally don't this second. Do I feel like there's a parking issue downtown this second? Me personally, no. I have talked to people that do, and I respect that. What I'm more concerned about and really thinking about is, as we develop the downtown, if we use the new zoning ordinance, we put the new zoning ordinance in, we do develop, we do have the River Project, we are creating a culture here for people to come from out of town, hang out, go there. We don't want the parking to sprawl. We do want to, as we look forward, say, "Okay, if we have this need, we create this dense, beautiful area with the river." We want people to have a centralized location that they could possibly utilize to walk around downtown all day, or as these events, you know, the bacon and beer and more events pop up, a centralized garage where they could park and pay and stay all day. I don't want to run into an issue where 20 years down the road, we don't have the land because we've developed it for other things. That's all. I don't...I think there's always going to be people that are unhappy about parking. I agree with you. And I think that you're never going to be able to always park right where you want to park, but I don't want to see us...my concern and my reason for wanting to have the conversation is to truly look towards the future and truly realize, all right, we don't want to develop at the pace where we look back and say, "Oh, there's nowhere for a ramp now." You know what I mean? So, that's why my big concern is, is that we're looking to develop responsibly.
And I totally appreciate that. I just think it's good to have the conversation of some kind of a reality check constantly because there is an expectation, I think, out there, because I've heard it come out of people's mouths into my own ears, that they want to be able to park directly in front of the business that they're going into. That's not possible.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor...
Can any motions get to come out of this because we're in committee, correct?
Well, there's...I was just thinking of that. There's not really a motion that's required.
Sure.
So, there's...we'd be proceeding forward. This is more just informational, because I was thinking of that, if, you know, we certainly have time for a public comment on this as well.
Motion to direct staff? Is that feasible?
Oh, yes, yes. If you have a motion, you'd like to do it separate, you're welcome to bring that forward.
Sure.
So, do you have one you'd want to do now?
Not currently.
Okay, okay. The Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you. Carrying on with Councilman Harding's comment, we need to identify a location for this that would be ideal, based on the data that the parking study shows. And looking at some of the points in there, the one that hit me pretty dominantly, I guess, was the acceptable walking distance people are willing to do between 69 and 71% of the customers, employees, and owners felt that two blocks or less was an acceptable walking distance. Now, keep in mind, if a parking ramp is two blocks to the west, you walk straight two blocks, and then you're at one business or a couple businesses, then you've got to go up and down the street. So, at any rate, the Visioning Company put together this depiction that I've thrown on the screen a number of times, and they show a ramp. And if they just randomly put it, but strategically looks like between Third and Fourth Street, one block off of Main, if that's something we want to identify, like Mr. Harding is saying, that would fit the north part of Main Street and as it develops, there's nothing to say that we couldn't have another one around Sixth and Seventh Street, parking ramps with a 10-year projection and so on. So, I think that...I mean, that's what I wanted to see...excuse me. The things that were being mentioned, I thought would be possible to have a little more of a presentation at this meeting, but obviously, there's many variables. What's the ideal price point for number of stalls, whether it's 200, 250, 300? And if we plan to have two locations over the next 20 years, that type of thing. But if we commit in a pretty sincere fashion going forward to identify a spot and fundraise for it in whatever way we figure out how to do, whether it's fee-in lieu of, that has an effect on the proposed parking ordinance that the Visioning Form-Based Zoning is going to come forward with. Because if we have remote parking 600 feet away, you're starting to put parking in a permanent, semi-permanent basis somewhere else within, I say, two football fields. It's a long way, 600 feet. People don't walk that far, don't want to walk that far according to the parking study. So, I think it's important that the two come together, the discussion of the current parking that we want to propose during the council session, whether, you know, if we want to do a formal study or, like Mr. Gaines said, tour cities, research, ask questions, I think that's important. And then, once we have that, then we have a better idea. Do we want to allow a development to have one spot per bedroom or request them to have one spot per bedroom, and if they can't do it on-site, then they pay to be in the parking ramp? And then, if there's a business at the lower level of that building and they need wait staff parking, they will buy into the parking ramp. I see that happening in Iowa City. I was in Davenport over the weekend. It's what they do, and I imagine that's what we'll have to try to go towards. So, the answer to the parking ramp questions will have a big effect on how we design our development code and requirements in the next session and into the future.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Councilor Darrin?
I would just go back to Mr. Gaines' initial comment, and I don't think we should be too proud not to go visit other communities like ours that have had success with this. I think we've implemented a few things here in Cedar Falls that were somewhat controversial, yet when we went to another community doing it and learned from them, those things turned out pretty good. So, I think part of goal-setting is to identify stakeholders, you know? We've had spit and contests here about, is it a parking problem or is there not? As long as there's a perceived problem, then it's a problem. So, why not get to people that are hardcore one way and hardcore another and find out how do we make it work for everybody? Ultimately, if downtown develops the way we want it to, we probably will need more parking. So, that'd be the other thing I'd want to do, is to look at this parking and plan it for several years down the road as opposed to addressing some immediate needs now and then wishing we had done it differently later. So, to me, making it a...if we move forward with the ordinance that we're advancing, pairing visitations and a study group and recognize it's not going to happen overnight, but we've got to start talking about it and reaching some compromise. But I'd rather the compromise be well-informed by finding other communities that have done it successfully. And I think they're out there, and I don't think we should be too proud to steal good ideas from other communities.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Miller?
The one, I don't disagree at all, but I think we've already been here. We hired a consultant to come in and look at other communities and say, "Hey, here's some things that work in other communities. Here's something that you can try in Cedar Falls." And from Jackie's presentation, we've done a lot of work in regards to parking. So, we took some steps forward, then we took some steps back. I don't know that we need to go all the way back through this. I think everybody...there's differing opinions as to which way we should go. I've heard plenty of people say we need a parking ramp. And like I said, I don't necessarily agree that that is the issue today, but looking forward, I think we need to set a date and be direct staff to say, "We need a parking authority. We need a group of people that are going to manage this over time." So, how do we do that? Ideally, I think there's a private-public partnership, which I think, you know, we had on the table here a while back and lost. So, I think that's the ideal scenario, and staff could be having those conversations now. I think unfortunately, there's got to be a compromise on the other side on the paid parking system. I don't know how we can maintain a ramp or even look to the future for a second ramp if we don't have a paid parking system. Who's going to go park on the third story of a parking ramp if it's free parking? I don't know who is. Mr. Cruz will. It's a tough conversation, but I think we have to just put it in place, set a date, direct staff to...by...in three years, in four years, in five years, let's get this on the CIP now. Let's plan it out because that's how things happen in Cedar Falls, Iowa, and find a way to fund it. Talk to the private individuals. Maybe our...the new Economic Development Group can be a part of this conversation, you know? I mean, there's enough folks, I think, on Main Street that think the ramp is necessary. Let's have a conversation and put it into place. So, I don't know if there's...if I can make a motion to have staff move this conversation along for goal-setting and have something prepared, I'm sure there's plenty going on right now in preparation for goal-setting. But again, this conversation's been going on for years, so if the ramp is what the public wants, then let's figure out how to do it. And at the same time, for the public, the paid parking system unfortunately is going to have to be part of this conversation, I think. So, that's my two cents.
Sure. So, if you'd like to put forward a motion and second, we could then open it up for public comment on that as well and then vote on that.
Could we hear from the public now and then decide?
I'd like to have a motion on the floor for, as part of that discussion, that conversation. So...
I would like to make a motion that staff brings to goal-setting at least a timeline on what is feasible and potential funding sources for a parking ramp.
Second.
Okay, so that's motion and seconded. Would council want to talk anymore about this, or can I open it to the public?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay. So, yes, at this time, we have a motion on the floor, but if you have things in addition to that, I'll have it kind of loose. You could talk about other parts that deal with public parking. So, would anyone like to start us off or comment tonight? Mr. Vajpayee? Name an address for the record, please. And could you also let us know if you're representing a client tonight?
Um, well, you know, downtown, or on the Hill, I represent...
Mr. Vajpayee? Could you let us know if you're representing a client tonight?
I was about to say that.
Okay.
Okay. Name, Eshan Vajpayee, 3831 Converland. I'm not actually sure why I need to say that, but I guess, just not to be too ornery, I will. I think if other people get up here and start representing LLCs, maybe we can start asking them who their partners are if I have to talk about who my client is. But on the Hill, I represent Brian Sires on these issues, and downtown, I'm representing Ben Stroh, but I talk with quite a bit of people. So, one thing I did always wonder about, and this is just a comment as a private citizen, the paid parking system, yeah, maybe it's necessary, but it's kind of hassle to go back and forth between Waterloo and Cedar Falls and use a different system. It was also kind of a hassle to go to Waterloo where theirs works so well. The app is fast, the app is easy to use, you have the option of using the app or continuing to put coins in at every spot, and then going to my first Rotary meeting, trying to use the one behind Tony's and going, "This does not work." I could get it to work, but there's a difference between getting it to work and making it easy for people to use. And so, I don't know how many of you tried it however many times, but it did not work on my latest greatest iPhone up until about two weeks I had the latest greatest iPhone. It was not good. You had to find out what lot you were in, and that sign was clear across the lot to find out what lot you were in. And if you couldn't get the app to work, or it crashed a few times on you like it did on me, and you tried to go to the kiosk, well, there's one kiosk. And then, one time I went there and that wasn't working. So, is it that people don't want to pay for parking, or the system just wasn't good? It's got to be more than just, "You can do it." It's got to be super-user-friendly for people to do. And I, I mean, I just think it's a huge blunder by the city to have implemented that system. I'm sorry. I saw on the slides that for long-term planning, we want to formalize opportunities to create more shared parking, continue with partnerships. And I was just curious what's been done on that. I mean, we keep hearing about the Viking Pump lot, but however, how many other businesses were approached? What incentives were they given? What concerns did they share? Were they offered a quick hotline to the city to be able to have cars towed out quickly? I mean, if I...my law office was downtown Cedar Falls, that's what I would worry about. I wouldn't care if people are necessarily parking in my parking lot overnight on a Saturday or something, but if I got to show up at 8:00 in the morning and the first thing on my agenda is not starting my workday, it's trying to figure out which towing company to call to get cars out of my lot? That's a problem. Or cleaning up the litter? That's a problem. That's another thing on my plate I don't need as a small business owner. Maybe they shared those concerns, but what did the shitty city share back in terms of solutions? What was done about that? How many were approached? What was their feedback? What was done on that front before just deciding to take their parking? So, you know, I think that those are a couple of questions that we should have heard about if we're really going to digest this public parking information as part of consideration of the downtown ordinance, which is the whole reason we had this presentation. I just felt there's a lot lacking to it, and I think, I don't know how people can really make a decision on this with a lot of that missing information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vajpayee. Mr. Beck, do you want to...
Mayor?
Yes.
If I can. As far as the existing parking lots go, the city hasn't approached anybody about taking their parking, just for clarity's sake. I think Mr. Vajpayee made that point or made that statement.
No, that's...no, my understanding was a relationship like with Viking Pump. We're not taking the parking, but building a relationship to use it with their permission. Did I represent that correctly?
Well, if you're taking parking under the ordinance, right, the downtown ordinance, I'm saying, what was gone short of that?
There isn't any taking parking, I guess.
That's a debate.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Beck, should I come forward to him?
Good evening. Darren Beck, 339 Golden here in Cedar Falls. I just want to say a couple of things that might make some sense. I agree this parking issue's been around for a long, long time. There's a lot of different opinions. Most of the people I know that think there's a parking problem are a stakeholder in downtown Cedar Falls. They either own a building or they own a business. The only business owner I know that doesn't think there's a parking problem is the guy that has the bike shop. Most of his customers, you know, he's got his own parking lot for all practical purposes. So, when we're talking about parking and we're talking about a lack of it, I think we need to start using a word that makes sense to people in today's terms, and it's called infrastructure. You know, you can only send so much stuff to the sewer treatment plant before you've got to make it bigger, right? Your city gets bigger, you've got to accommodate these things. Parking is an infrastructure, and it is a critical infrastructure for those people who built businesses down here over the last 20 years. You've all heard the old saying, "Build it, and they will come." These people built businesses believing that they would come. People did come. People are still coming, but some people have went and said, "We're not coming back" because of the parking situation. The free versus paid is a whole nother conversation. I do think there's a room for compromise for a blended system. I think people love the free street parking. I think they're probably willing to pay in the parking lots, and I know that... I think they're probably willing to pay in the parking lots, and I know they're willing to pay in the parking ramps. What I know is for sure is we're here tonight because this ordinance for the form-based zoning is going to do something to the parking requirements for new development that is absolutely going to devastate downtown if the existing problem isn't resolved. It's just going to add insult to injury. And to not deal with this issue now is just not right. Our business owners and our residents deserve a vibrant downtown that has adequate infrastructure, and parking is the key component to the infrastructure down here. And I would challenge you to just think back about what the city was collecting in property taxes 20 years ago on the properties on State Street, Main Street, and Washington Street. Do the math, figure it out. I guarantee you, there's plenty of money there to pay for a parking ramp. And I also believe that if you build a parking ramp, they will come. Not just more people, but more businesses, more industries, technology companies, people that can actually come downtown to go to work and can eat in our restaurants, have a cocktail in our bars, and shop in our retail stores. It adds to the vibrancy of the overall nature of the downtown. We're becoming something bigger and better than we've ever been before in downtown Cedar Falls, and without infrastructure, we're not going to get there. And I think maybe Simon said it, we're going to be landlocked with no place to do this at some point. Ramp, I don't know how it became such a dirty word. It's not, you know, maybe people look at the empty ramps in downtown Waterloo. Well, there's reasons for empty ramps in downtown Waterloo. We won't go into that here tonight. I spend most of my week right now in Iowa City, and I can assure you that ramps are full. Their businesses are full of people, and they're doing a tremendous amount of commerce down there. I realize it's the University of Iowa, but we also have U and I, and I think we can also contribute to making U and I a more attractive college by having a more vibrant downtown. We're a big piece of that. Those students come down here all the time. I'm just asking you to please, before you ram this form-based zoning through in your council meeting tonight, to think about what's really happening with the parking and fix that language in that. Look, I'm not here to say form-based zoning is a bad thing. I'm here to say that the parking, the half a parking stall for the first bedroom and a quarter of a parking stall for each additional bedroom in residential components to new development downtown is crazy, absolutely crazy. And I want you to think about it, and just think about all the people that have invested everything they have into their businesses downtown. They're counting on you. They're counting on you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Anyone else wish to speak for it in the gallery for public comment? Yes, Mr. Bender, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jim Bender, 1816 Valley High Drive, Cedar Falls. I'm encouraged by the parking ramp discussion. I am for new buildings. I am for parking ramps. I am for new infrastructures, Mr. Beck said. I think that's a good idea. What I am not for is shared parking. So I hope that since we all believe that maybe it's a good idea to investigate for a parking ramp, to do the study and to find out what the demographics look like, when you do that, I hope you'll take in mind that we either need one or the other, not both. We don't need shared parking and a parking ramp. Let's do a parking ramp, and you don't have to take anybody's rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to council for any final discussions on this motion that's on the floor. Okay? Yeah.
For clarity's sake, the motion on the floor was to have staff bring back parking ramp options, funding sources, and information at goal setting.
For the CIP, and we didn't set a time for that to occur, but it would be a discussion for the, probably a committee of the whole, is that?
I thought it was set for goal setting, but could you clarify, Mark? Sorry.
Yeah, where would you want to have that?
It was to bring it back at goal setting.
At goal setting, okay.
At least it's some type of a timeline to have a discussion on and a funding source, potentially.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Cruz.
I like the goal-setting idea, but as the council members know, we talk about, what, 150 topics, maybe 10 of them in depth at goal setting. I'd like to see possibly if we can figure out some way to have a committee meeting with some of this presented so we can digest it, and then we go to goal setting and kind of narrow some options down possibly. Or maybe a work session or two, record it, public can watch, give feedback over the course of a month, two months, three months. I'm not sure I, goal setting's not that far away.
Well, to that point, oh, sorry. To that point, that's a, that's a big ask of staff to bring back when we already have, probably, I'm assuming, have committee meetings before. We're going to possibly have new council members. I would say that that's a good idea to spend more time on it, work session, committee, but then it would probably make more sense to do it after the election and do it in January or something like that, if that's the route you want to go.
Yeah, I guess there's nothing to say that we can't, after goal setting is done, we have a little asterisk there to say parking ramp slash something, something, you know, and start allocating money. We have a parking fund of X dollars. We could find out what it is, but, you know, we have something to start with. And we know the process is going, and we're committed to the process of exploring a parking ramp, the location, the viability of how many levels can we build it like Legos when an area of town gets developed, we can throw on another level or two. I mean, that would be.
Modular.
Huh?
Like a modular style ramp.
Lego sounds cool.
I like Legos. To bring it full circle, I think Mark's point, or Councilmember Miller's point about starting it at goal session is a good idea, just because it can get some information to us, and then we can take it to committee or work session, but, you know.
If, okay.
And at that point, we'd have the seated new council members as well.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. That's fine, but Mr. Gaines or Mrs. Rotabek can explain that isn't goal setting where we fine-tune for the budget for the coming year? And I know goal setting, we talk about things, but it's usually financially significant to the budget.
Well, if you remember, goal setting's a planning document that we put together, and these are items that we're going to look at in the next couple of years and how we're going to move forward with that. And then the course of those couple of years that come along, we start to implement those. What I would hope with regard to this parking conversation is that staff would bring back basically a plan for a way forward. You know, is that setting up a committee? Is that looking at a schedule of when we can get some of these decisions made so we can implement those into a, into that CIP process and move forward from there. But in order to have that, I think we're going to need a lot of feedback from the stakeholders as well that would be in there. So for us to actually bring a plan back by goal setting, I think, would be premature.
And then goal setting, too, will also express the general consent of the council on topics. So you haven't voted on an item, but it shows that the council wants to have staff devote time into certain topics. So this would be a great one to say, yes, we want staff to devote that time into the topic, and maybe set some boundaries around that as well in the doc.
Well, then allocate X dollars for the process.
Sure, sure. And like have it listed for targeting the CIP, that sort of thing.
Mayor.
Yes.
To Mr. Gaines, is that reasonable for staff, for goal setting, to have at least a rough number as to what a parking ramp could run and timeline?
Yes, I think we can put the skeleton or the outline together for a way forward, but to really get into some of those details, like I said, you're going to want stakeholders, you're going to want some of those meetings, and I just think there's, there's a lot that goes into this. You're roughly talking about when we were discussing the public-private partnership with the ramp downtown, you were looking at $5 million plus. So we want to make sure that we do this, we do this right, and it's an attractive structure if, if that's the way we end up going. It's an attractive structure that actually fits into our downtown as well. You don't want a sore thumb sitting down there that's not used. So hopefully, we can get a beautiful structure that would fit in and be highly used.
So then bringing that forward and at least getting a consensus at goal setting allows that conversation to happen throughout the next year with stakeholders as intended, I think, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for that motion or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask quick if anybody in the crowd wants to respond to what we just discussed, possibly?
I'll allow it. Does anyone have any extra comments?
Hearing none, I guess.
All right. Good thought. So it's been motion and seconded to have this item brought forward in goal setting with, for a timeline and a rough estimate of financials. If I captured that okay? Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes, and we will discuss that as a core topic in goal setting. That is the end of this part of our session, and so we have, for our next item on the agenda, we're doing Planning and Zoning Commission interviews. We had 10 minutes set aside for that originally. We were going to have some issues with people being here, but it looks like we've got Dr. Moser, Anna Peterson I saw earlier, and then also Oksana Gavich. So we'll have Oksana, if you don't mind coming forward first. We'll, oh, yes, please, it's up to the podium. And we had an opportunity to look at your application and.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Information. So the floor's yours. If you'd just like to introduce yourself and then council will have a few, maybe a few questions for you.
Absolutely. Nice to meet all of you. Oksana Gavich Haferman. I'm a longtime resident of Cedar Falls, originally from Europe, Ukraine. I am currently serving as Associate Dean of College of Education at the University of Northern Iowa, and also am a tenured faculty in the Department of Health Recreation and Community Services with a research and teaching background in community tourism, development, and community planning.
Okay.
Brief background.
So does council have any questions for Dr. Gavich Haferman? Seeing none, then that's a.
No.
Yes, council, we're there.
What motivated you to apply to be on this commission?
Absolutely. I love this community. It's a dear home for me. It's home for my family and home for my children, and I want to see this community a better place, and I would like to put my skills to use whichever way I can, and I hope that you'll make the best use of me.
And do you have any experience with planning and zoning kind of issues specifically in your past work?
Absolutely. That's more so on the academic side, working with different communities, both in the United States and Canada, on different issues. Some riverfront communities, some landlocked communities, as communities went through the planning processes. And of course, if you look at different countries, they have different regulations and different experience, different bylaws. Some are very creative and very innovative, some are more traditional. So from that standpoint, yes, I have worked with several communities on those projects.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, then I should also note, too, this isn't an interview for the three candidates, like it's not three separate candidates, it's three appointments going forward. So each of these people I'm recommending for appointment, and they will be included in the next council packet for your approval. So I just didn't want you to think that they're competing against each other when they speak. So thank you very much for coming forward and for your willingness to serve the city, and we look forward to having you up for a vote on the meeting on the first.
Thank you for inviting me over.
Thank you.
And I'll go second with Dr. Moser, if you're on with us tonight.
Hey, can you hear me?
Sure can. She just finished up with her first class tonight, so was able to come out of that unscathed.
Yeah, thanks for letting me join you via Zoom. I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing everyone on the microphone, so I hope I get everyone's comments heard.
Okay, we hear you fine.
Okay, great.
So if you'd like to just introduce yourself and let us know why you have an interest, had an interest in serving on planning and zoning?
Sure. My name is Kristen Moser. I've been a longtime resident of Cedar Falls. I was initially a U and I undergrad. I moved away, moved out of state, and then was one of those many Iowans who moved back and really enjoyed my time in Cedar Falls and decided to move here and raise a family. I work at U and I. I am currently serving as the Assistant to the President for Institutional Effectiveness and Planning. And what that really means is I do all sorts of planning and evaluation relative to the work that we're doing on U and I campus. I applied for this role because I really do feel I want to give back to the community, and I felt with my background and with my experiences, I would be able to contribute in meaningful ways to this committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Moser. Open it for council questions. Seeing none? Then I thank you also for your willingness to serve on planning and zoning, and your consideration will be up on November 1st for that next five-year term. So thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our final nomination forward is Hannah Peterson. So Hannah, if you'd like to introduce yourself as well.
Hi, everyone. I, too, am having a little bit of difficulty hearing everyone speak, so hopefully you can hear me. I am a Cedar Falls resident, born and raised, spent a few years living in Los Angeles and then Salt Lake City for a brief moment, and then moved back to Cedar Falls. And I'm currently on the College Home Partnership, serving as the Vice President and live in the College Home neighborhood. I work for a company called Agency Block, which is local to the area and located downtown. It's a small software company. And I wanted to join planning and zoning just because I wanted to learn more about my community and wanted to serve my community. I don't have a lot of experience as it relates specifically to planning and zoning, but I do have a passion for our community, and I'm really excited to learn more and to just be able to be a part of growing our community and helping those who want to be part of it as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Do we have any questions for her?
I'll just say hi, Hannah.
Hi, Frank.
How are you? Thanks for doing this.
Yeah.
Excellent. So I'll just note again that this will be, the November 1st council meeting is when all of the nominations will come forward to the council for approval. It'll be a total of four members, including one reappointment. And that process that came through was through a selection committee comprised of Councilmember Harding, as well as the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also Administrator Gaines had a rep on who was, is it Karen Howard, for this cycle? And thank you, Karen, for participating in that as well. And the goal is always just to percolate the most qualified candidates. So we thank you very much for being part of that interview process and look forward to seeing you in selection next week. So thank you very much. And that actually concludes our council meeting, or excuse me, our committee of the whole for tonight. So we will adjourn until seven o'clock, and I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Saved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we are adjourned.